United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, we do have, once we get settled here, Sam asked you to give a report on closed session.
The council considered both agenda items and direction was given to staff.
Thank you. City Clerk, any additional materials?
Yes, we received three additional material items, one for item 10A, one for 10B, and one for 10D. 10D is up at the dais, the most recent, there were some number changes in the staff report
Oh, right.
for the garbage rates, that's not 10B, sorry.
Ninety.
Ninety, thank you.
Right.
And, good news is, they're lower, so you'll see the correction in red.
Lower's good. Okay, let's move on to any additions and deletions in the agenda.
Staff has no changes?
Okay, so this is a time for public comments on anything not on the agenda, come forward, if you'd like, you put your name on the dais there, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Cherie McCoy, Capitola residents.
And the light will come on signifying you're starting, okay.
The purpose of the Capitola Mall is to make money for Capitola. These days, many consumers shop online and a trip to the mall is unnecessary. We need a special place that is much more than just for shopping, a true destination spot, where people can spend their money and enjoy a unique Capitola experience. When Merlone Geyer Partners presented their proposal for redevelopment, they showed pictures of the Venetian, the Six Sisters, and other examples of Capitola architecture. Then they showed drawings with their interpretation for a new Capitola aesthetic. The renderings do not reflect the charm of Capitola in any way. They look like any other ugly mall in America with high-density housing slapped onto it. The proposal dedicates a considerable amount of property and amenities exclusively for new residential use. Courtyards filled with relaxing green space, turf for outdoor games, activities, and exercise, group gathering spaces, expansive bar seating, and relaxing lounge nooks. Amenities such as these should be in the grand plan for all mall patrons, not for newly-created residents, with a seven-story building wrapped around an eight-level parking lot and a five-story building wrapped around a six-level parking lot and their 1,100 cars. Unrealistically, the renderings show a handful of vehicles with people happily walking in front of the cars. Creating new streets for residential access and shoppers will not eliminate the traffic on the surrounding streets. New streets with a four-way intersection in the middle of the project does not build community, it builds separation. Research indicates that residential use for this site is not profitable for Capitola. Omitting housing from the project will also free up the massive amount of green space the plan reserves exclusively for residential use. Outdoor dining doesn't have to be eating at a table on a sidewalk thoroughfare next to streetcars. Outdoor dining should be patrons in a relaxing place to get away from it all, including escape from the car exhaust, loud Bluetooth conversations, blaring radios, honking horns, and cussing from drivers waiting for motorists to hurry up and navigate the angled parking spaces on the street. Although the plan frowns on orphaned buildings, it calls for isolated units to introduce sidewalk-oriented commercial buildings along 41st Avenue street frontage. Let your temporal forces guide you to preserve Capitola's unique cultural and historic character, and happy holidays to one and all.
Thank you very much, okay. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to city council and staff comments.
No comments.
No comments. Okay, this will be my last time as mayor of City of Capitola, at least for this time, this period of time, and so I have a few comments, be very brief. So, in this last year, I've been very impressed with the fact that this city comes forward when challenges are confronted. We've had a number of hearings on various issues like the downtown hotel proposal, we've had complexities related to city planning membership, and we've had a large response when Merlone Geyer has presented its plans to us. So, that indicates to me that we have a healthy community. We have people that pay attention to what's going on in this community, we have people that are willing to come to us, to the city hall meetings and other means that we've had, and comment, often saying things that they know people may not agree with, but it doesn't matter, they're here, expressing their opinions. And I want to encourage the citizens of Capitola to continue doing that. I want to further encourage you to get more involved, because that's what makes us a healthy community. When I first moved to Capitola over 20 years ago, maybe it's 23 or 25, I can't even remember how long I've been married, I always forget these things, but when I first became involved, that was one thing that impressed me, and it's been a constant. Many people that I've met on the street, I walk the streets a lot, talk often about how they know their neighbors, they talk often about how they feel comfortable walking around this city, they feel safe, our police, but also the community that's part of us is making that a safe environment. So, these are things that you, as residents, contribute. You contribute by being a participant, you contribute by making your presence known in this community. The second point is, this community is actually very complicated. There's many different organizations, there's volunteer organizations, there's groups that are connected with city nonprofits, groups that are connected with efforts on, god, so many different things. If you have an issue, maybe connected with the RTC or connected with something that's happening in terms of housing, there are multi-levels of groups that people can get involved in, and I encourage you to do so. So, with that, I'd like to also point out a few things. I witnessed a confrontation in one of the commercial areas the other day, and it was between a resident and some of our police officers, and I asked the chief about it. I was very encouraged to know that what happened was an effort to talk this person down from the situation that was riling that person up. I'd really like to give a shout-out to the police. I know the chief has put in training so that this is now a natural way that we deal with issues that are on the street. Heretofore, in many other areas of this county, and maybe in this country, people are arrested, given citations, and maybe hauled away. I have a special thanking, I thank to our police department for acting in this way to calm people down and to recognize that sometimes things just aren't working right. I witnessed this also at a Starbucks, I was in a Starbucks, a lot of you know that I go to many different places, I could talk to people, and the lady behind the counter, there was someone sitting next to me just going crazy, the lady behind the counter came over and talked to this person. The person calmed down, actually apologized, said that just something ticked them off, and for the rest of the half hour I was there, it was fine. So, I think this speaks to something about how we interact with people, just realize that sometimes it's a little bit difficult, and also realize sometimes we don't have to, excuse me, magnify the situation, make it into something it actually isn't. So, my shout-out to the police department. Also, I'd like to shout-out to our Streets and Road Division, run by Steve, there's a lot of people up by the McCormick Triangle, we now have a little pseudo-park, and it's a great thing, the people in the neighborhood love it, there's a seat there that people sit on and such like that, and everyone is feeling a lot more pride about their little neighborhood, and I completely think it's a wonderful thing that Steve's department did. There's many other things like this, I'm just thinking of two. So, when you think about why you like this city, it's not just the people that live here, it's also the services that this city provides, just like you rake up the leaves from your lawn, you keep your street clean, you put out your garbage, you do all these things, the people that work for the City of Capitola do these things for the city in general. And that's what we learn to expect, but don't take it for granted. So, when you see someone that is part of the city here, hey, say hello, wave to them, make them know that they're part of the community. The reasons why I give these comments is because being mayor for a year has made me realize the richness of this community, and it's also made me realize how interdependent we are in terms of making sure it's a place we want to live in and keep being involved so we stay that way. Thank you.
Mayor Betran, before we move forward, the staff and the council would like to present you with a gift to thank you for your service
Oh!
in this last year as mayor.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I will open it now. When I was in business and marketing, I had to travel all over the place, and I went to Japan, and I was told, you have to give gifts, so I gave gifts, but I was also told it was impolite to have them open in front of you. So, I mean, there's cultural differences all over the world, and, you know, I had to take a course on cultural sensitivity, but in Capitola, you open up the present.
Trick package.
It's definitely a trick package. Okay. It was very tricky, I don't know, how'd you get it in here?
Magic.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to item 7, one, and this is city council reorganization for the selection of mayor and vice mayor. I'd like to open it for nominations, Ed, you seem to always have something to say.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think just an announcement I'd like to make for the public watching in case they don't know, and that is that in Capitola, we don't elect a mayor, we appoint a mayor. And every year, we, the council, who are all proud to serve here, select the person that they feel is best suited to be the face of that city, because what you see now is that although we all serve as council members, a lot of the public flocks to the mayor and the advice that that person may give. So, it's an extreme honor to be the mayor of Capitola, I believe, and with that, it gives me great pleasure to nominate Kristen Peterson for mayor for 2020.
Is there a second?
I'll second that nomination.
Okay, any discussion? I don't think we need any. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Batorv.
Aye.
And Mayor Betran.
Aye, okay. With that, I hand you the cap.
Thank you, sir.
Get all that stuff.
Yeah, quick reorganization of the dais as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. You're not thirsty?
Not yet.
All right, thank you so much, I am honored to serve in this position in the coming year, and I thank my fellow council members for your faith in me to hold this position on the council, and I will do my best to make you proud. Thank you. We'll move on to the second part of item 7 and reorganization, which is consideration of a vice mayor for 2020. Is there any discussion, or is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council on this before we consider a nomination? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for a nomination.
I would be proud to nominate Councilwoman Brooks to be vice mayor.
Well, second.
We have a motion in a second, shall we do a roll call vote again?
Sure. Your pleasure.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Councilmember Betran.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Batorv.
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Congratulations. And again, quick reorganization of some seating, and if there's, unless there's any objections, we'll save any other rotations of seats or any other changes for our upcoming meeting. Sound good? General consensus?
Excellent, I'm happy down here, so.
Okay.
And I think Ed's happy down there, so.
Okay.
I'm at the will of mayor and vice mayor.
You are right here, sir, here, I'm gonna move this over here for you.
Actually, the most important thing is the candy that Mr. Betran's gonna give.
That's true. All right, wonderful, all right, thank you so much. Vice Mayor Brooks, do you have any brief comments before we move on?
I just received a text message from my husband saying that he logged on with my five-year-old daughter to watch this, and that just fills too much in my heart, so.
Wonderful, okay, we're gonna move on in tonight's meeting to item 8, boards, commissions, and committee appointments. 8A is appoint art and cultural commission members, do we have a staff report?
Just a oral, we have three seats that are open, which were advertised, and we have three members who expressed interest in being reappointed, as is the practice in the bylaws, that is supported by the full council, the Art and Cultural Commission, so we have the reappointment of Callahan, Wallace, and I'm missing the third.
Hill.
Member Stormin.
Lori Hill.
Lori Hill, thank you. And it is at the council's pleasure.
Thank you. Is there any member of the, excuse me, is there any questions from the council on this item? No questions, is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, we're gonna bring it back to the council for a discussion. Any discussion?
Okay.
No comments.
No?
I'm waiting to hear from the representative from the Arts and Cultural Commission.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ed. Well, I think, I just, I mean, I've worked with all three of these individuals over the past year, and they're just all very hard-working volunteers for the community. They have done and continue to do so much toward enhancing public art in our community, there've been numerous projects that they've been involved in. And with that, I would like to make a motion that the council consider reappointing Mary Beth Cahalan, Lori Hill, and James Wallace as the at-large members for the Capitola Arts and Cultural Commission.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We're gonna move on to 8B, appointment of a youth member to Art and Cultural Commission.
I'm very excited to announce this, this is the last open spot we have for a youth member, so we now have, should it be your pleasure to appoint him, a youth member on all of the boards, which have eligible spots, so.
Fantastic.
That is a very positive milestone, and this nominee is Aiden McKenzie, grew up in Capitola, had the opportunity also to be interviewed by the Arts Commission, they have recommended his appointment. Is Aiden here?
He is not.
Okay, and so it is at the council's pleasure.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? Any member of the public that would like to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, we're gonna bring it back to the council for a discussion.
I'll start, I'll tell, it was Aiden that approached me, and I met with him actually to discuss getting involved with the city, and he actually is a neighbor of Sam's, he's about five doors down from Sam, but comes from a great family, very enthusiastic, said he wanted to get involved and run the city, and I said, well, let's start off a little bit, you know, down the road and get to running the city, but I, just, great, great person, a lot of enthusiasm, and I'd like to make a motion that we appoint him to the Art and Cultural Commission.
You have a motion?
I'll second that motion, and if I may add, you know, I've known Aiden all his life, and he was at the last meeting that we had last Tuesday night, and, you know, I've been involved with the Capital Arts Commission for probably going on 30 years now, and this is the first time that we've had a youth member, so I am so pleased that he's willing to step up, you know, be involved, be engaged, and participate in the Arts Commission, and it could, it is the stepping stone to greater things in our community, so we'll see where this takes Aiden, so thank you.
Great, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, congratulations. All right, oh, we have item 8C, consider council financial advisory commission membership.
Yes, the charter for the Finance Advisory Commission requires two members of the council to sit on this body, and gives first right of refusal to the mayor and the vice mayor, so we would like to know at this point whether the mayor and the vice mayor intend to take those seats, or if they would like to have others appointed in their place. Depending on that decision, we may also need to open up nominations for representatives because of the domino effect, we may have other positions that we will then need to recruit from the public.
Okay. Any questions from council on this? Any member of the public that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. I personally would like to continue in my role on the Finance Advisory Committee, Council, Vice Mayor Brooks.
Yeah, so I'll be stepping in as well on the fact, and I just wanna make sure that we, I recognize Doug Crowder, who was my previous appointment for his dedication this past year, so thanks to Doug.
Absolutely. So, do we need a vote on this, or is this just a, okay?
What will happen, though, is now we have a vacancy, and so
Oh, right.
the city clerk will be advertising the vacancy, and then it'll come back to the council, and I believe it'll be Councilmember Betran's appointment, then once we've advertised the vacancy for you to make the appointment.
Yes.
Has Doug reached out, or have we?
Not until we have gone through this process, so I will notify him, and it is, as it is required, and by state law, we have to open it up to everyone, and after that point, we will bring it back, but the commission does not meet again until February, so this, taking this action at this time gives us plenty of time to make, do that outreach, so thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to consent calendar, these are items that will be enacted by one motion. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council regarding any items on the consent calendar, or would like any item pulled for separate discussion and consideration? Seeing none, is there anyone on the council that would like anyone from consent calendar moved for separate discussion? Seeing none, we will entertain a motion?
I saw move, accept the consent calendar.
Do we need to accept the motion with the changes that were presented to item 9D earlier by staff?
Good call. Okay, I
We get a clarification from staff?
I moved the consent calendar with the updates provided by the city clerk.
It doesn't affect the resolution, it was not the resolution wording, just the staff.
This is the replacement.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have, I'm sorry, did we have a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Moving on to general government and public hearings, item 10A, consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a tree removal permit for a coastal redwood at 1649th Avenue, do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do, thank you, Mayor Peterson and council. The item before you tonight is an appeal of a Planning Commission denial of a tree removal permit to remove a coastal redwood tree near an existing single-family residence in the single-family residential zoning district. This evening, staff will describe the tree removal application process and present the appeal. Next, the appellant will be given the opportunity to speak and answer any city council questions. The mayor will then open the public portion of the hearing, and that will be followed by a city council discussion and decision. Most tree removal permits reviewed and are reviewed and approved at the staff level, indicated by the track on the left here. They begin with a preliminary review from Public Works staff, who can approve the removal of a non-heritage tree if findings for removal can be made. If findings cannot be made, the application is transferred to planning staff for further review. The city may require the applicant to pay for an arborist under contract to the city to provide an arborist report for the tree. The community development director will then make a determination based on the findings in the arborist report. As noted in the staff report, the current appeal before you went through the required steps, and the permit was denied by the community development director based on the arborist findings. An appeal of the community development director determination to the Planning Commission was received on May 28, 2019. A subsequent appeal was made to the city council on October 13, 2019. The tree proposed for removal is a coastal redwood located in the front yard of 1649th Avenue, approximately five feet from the side property line. The tree is several feet in diameter at breast height with a large canopy. The lower canopy extends over the northwest corner of the appellant's residence, the canopy extends into the adjacent property at 4910 Capitola Road, but is not over the residence. The tree is not a heritage tree and not located in an environmentally sensitive habitat area. Here's a couple of views of the property showing the canopy extent in relation to the two homes. In January 2019, the tree experienced a branch failure, as shown on the right, sorry, left. In March 2019, the tree experienced a second branch failure, the tree experienced a third branch failure in November 2019. In order for either the community development director, Planning Commission, or city council to approve the removal of a non-heritage tree, the same review process applies. At least one finding for removal must be made, and there must be no feasible alternatives, including trimming. The findings, which include the health of the tree, safety considerations, and property damage, are shown here. They will be addressed individually in the following slides. The first criterion considers the health or condition of the tree with respect to disease, infestation, or danger of falling. Public Works staff, the consulting arborist, and the forester all considered the tree to be in good health. Although branch tip damage from marine air was addressed by the forester and arborist, neither indicated that the damage was a concern to the overall tree health. Based on the assessment, staff could not make a finding of removal from the health or condition of the tree. Second consideration is safety. The arborist stated that the tree did not appear to have been pruned or managed in a manner that would decrease branch failure potential. He added that maintenance pruning would address present safety considerations. Based on the ability to mitigate future risk of branch failure through proper maintenance, staff could not make a finding of removal for safety considerations. Third consideration for removal is situations where a tree has caused or has the potential to cause unreasonable property damage and/or interference with existing utility services. According to the arborist, the tree is not at risk for total failure or falling over. Concerns for potential property damage pertain to the loss of branches. As with considerations for safety, these concerns can be addressed through the maintenance pruning of branches. Based on the ability to mitigate future risk of branch failure through proper maintenance, staff could not make a finding of removal for a tree that has caused or has the potential to cause unreasonable property damage. The fourth consideration is that all possible and feasible alternatives to tree removal have been evaluated, including but not limited to undergrounding of utilities, selective root cutting, trimming, and relocation. This finding must be made in conjunction with one of the previous findings for removal. Based on the alternative described in the arborist report, staff could not make a finding that no feasible alternatives exist, and therefore denied their permit. So, with that, staff recommends that the city council deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission denial of the tree removal application and the approval of the pruning measures established in the arborist report.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to council for any questions, I'll start at the end, Sam, any questions?
Yeah, Matt, thank you for that report, I guess I did have one question of clarification on the arborist report in which you spoke to. In his report, I read where he states that there's no reported history of tree maintenance by the current owner, the subject tree does not appear to have been pruned or managed, and it states in a manner that would decrease branch failure potential. So, my question, I read in the record that the current owners have done some trimming and attempted to do some maintenance back in 2012, 2013, and that's not reflected in the arborist report. So, I guess my question is, is he saying that he could see that it had been trimmed, but it wasn't trimmed in a manner that would decrease branch failure?
Yes.
Or is he saying that he didn't see, or he's saying that there was no trimming done to the tree?
At the time of the report, I don't believe he'd received from the appellant the information about the year in which they got the trimming done, but was stating that some trimming work had been done, but not in a way that he would advise, proper trimming. It sounded like more of branch removal, full branch removal, rather than tipping, I think it's called, to manage how the tree grows.
And it doesn't seem that the arborist speaks to the appropriate type of trimming. And it doesn't seem that the arborist speaks to the appropriate type of trimming. And it, could you clarify, is the arborist saying that branch removal is the appropriate way to do it? And it's, didn't sound like it was, or that branch, trimming the tips of the branches is the appropriate way to do it, and it was not done that way? Is that?
I, I don't know exactly uh the specific way that was um recommended. There was a specific regimen that was discussed between the arborist and Lewis Tree Service that, in which he established that um done properly, whatever that entails with tipping, would maintain the tree for the next eight to ten years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I could add to this, I spoke to the arborist, James Allen, yesterday, it, just to, and asked a similar question, and his advice was to uh tree tipping, or to trim the ends of the tree in order, branches, in order to decrease the weight of the actual branches. So, rather than removing single branches, the whole branch, his suggestion was to trim them to take off some of the weight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Brooks?
Um, so, the trimming that took place in two thousand twelve, I believe that, I believe it was, was that um done based off of the direction of council in two thousand twelve? Was that something, so they did that on their own? Um, and that was the same year that they applied for the removal of the tree, that it, from what I?
I'm not sure, I'd have to look back and check. That may be, they, that may be a better question for them when they come up.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have for now, yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, when I look at the picture here, and I've gone out and inspected the tree about three times, uh, the last was today, and I did talk to the owner. It seems like the tree is out of balance. So, on the side, not on the property owner's side, but on the adjacent uh owner's side, it's weighted over to that side. Have a little concern about that. I think the branches that broke off were on the property owner's side, from what I could observe, but I wasn't there, so, and I didn't do, I mean, I wasn't there when the branches broke. But the picture clearly showed that it damaged the um, the fence, I think, between, and you could see the damage, I could see the damage. So, I'm questioning, um, where did the branches fall off? Do we have a sense it's on the property owner's side? Um, there's complaints from the owner, uh, neighbor, that they're worried, you know, it's their dog, and you know, if they're out there. So, I'm wondering where that occurred. I noted that the um, one of the places where a branch broke off, there was a new branch forming, which sounds very healthy, might contribute to rebalancing the tree. Did, did the arborist detail where all the branches fell? Do we have a sense of where they fell? And if it's just on one side of the tree, that's sort of making me wonder why.
I, I don't believe, that might be another better question for the uh appellant when they get up as to the branch.
Okay.
Fall locations.
Yeah. And then, the issue of the tree looking unbalanced makes me concerned. You know, maybe work was done on one side because that's where the owner's house was, but not on the other side, 'cause it's on the adjacent uh property, and they didn't feel they could get there. So, I'm wondering about that, maybe that can be addressed when the appellant talks.
I have no questions.
All right. Having considered council's questions, uh, we're gonna move on. Would it be, uh, could we get staff uh advice here? Would it be appropriate to allow the appellant first to uh speak to council before we go to general public comment? Okay. Uh, if the appellants would like to address the council at this time? Uh, let's see, we're gonna have five minutes for um comments from the appellants, if we could set the timer.
Is it possible to get the screen up here? The computer up here?
That, that's the one that um that you'll.
Yeah, that's the one I, I'll, yeah, but can I lift it up here?
Larry, can you put her on the podium?
Are they long enough?
But no, he wants to know if he can put it on the podium?
It's okay, it's okay.
I, I never present from there, forgive me.
Okay. I appreciate the time you provided to hear the appeal, as well as the time you spent reviewing the material I've sent, as well as uh the registered forestry professional, as well as your own arborist. I'd like to start the presentation at the end of it, actually, by uh the closing paragraph of the second letter that Mike Janai, our registered professional forester wrote. Then it says, "In closing, I want to reiterate my concern that attempting to culture this tree's risk is not a sufficient or feasible way to protect the safety of the Olivers or their neighbors, nor will it reduce a very real and large liability. I hope that the information I've act, I've additionally provided you may help to clarify those risks." We've gone over the branch failures, we've had four, one in February was uh not so sufficient. Uh, I wanna skip this for time, but uh Mr. Janai's qualifications are, he's a chief forester of four hundred thousand acres of redwoods, half of all California redwoods. He's worked for Big Creek for decades, he's worked in the business for forty-five years, and he was appointed to California State Board of Forestry by both Governors Brown and Newsom. He knows his redwood trees. They both, you went over both of what they've agreed to. The cor, the really important part of this tree is that they both agree that there's a genetic difference to this tree over most coastal redwoods. And it causes uniquely long and large in diameter branches prone to failure. Uh, branch failure will continue, they both have stated they agree with that, and there was a hole in the canopy. And we did do previous branching and pruning and branch reduction throughout the whole tree. So, you're, we can talk about that later. So, the important part is it will continue to uh re, uh fail, branches continue to fail. Here's the canopy. The sprout that uh, that former mayor Bertrand was talking about is in the center. These are uh, like uh Mr. Janai also pointed out, that there's a uh reduction in the girth of the uh, of the tree at about forty feet, probably due to the foundation or street work. Uh, it may cause other failures. Uh, the city arborist, because he didn't talk to us, um, and said there was only one broken tree on the March thirteenth event, there were actually, because I felt this was an emergency situation, and I called Lewis Tree first, then came to the city and asked if we could do an emergency removal. I had Lewis Tree take the seven branches that fell off away, as well as uh seven branches in the tree. The one that's really critical here, although the red arrows in here show you where the ones on this side had, had fallen and were still in tree. There's one that's just above the roof, the arrow to the left side, and there's a light opening there, stick going down. That's a seven-inch branch of about thirty feet long hanging over the sidewalk. Um, I'd like to show you the video of this, but it doesn't seem to be wanting coming up. Is there a way to get this up?
Try clicking on the image itself. And then you'll get the scroll at the bottom.
Oh, it's tilted, unfortunately. And there's, and there's volume that's not there. So, I'm walking under this tree, showing you this, this was the March thirteenth failure, and there's no wind. There's very little wind at this time when this tree failed. These branches, seven branches all came down on our neighbor's side, from their side of the tree. Seven branches, not a big storm event, done, gone. Here's the November twenty-sixth branch that came down. Uh, we all know it was very windy that night. This tree had been tipped. This, I mean, this branch had been tipped, it flew, the base through, flew twenty feet. The tip, because it was probably on the left side where the wind was coming through, it flew forty feet. So, the branch is flying about forty feet. And this is a huge tree, it's uh probably about three hundred pounds, twenty-four feet long, getting thrown around like it was nothing. This is shows where it was tipped, and it's six years ago, it's grown back, it gets weighted at the end, prone to break, which is what uh Mike Janai says would happen, and why he doesn't believe that um the pruning will work. Yeah, the tipping will work. Mike Janai believes that uh this particular tree, due to genetics and growth conditions, its unsafe in its location, will continue to have branch failure. Strangely opposes branch reduction on this tree due to the increase in long-term potential for branch failure, the end waiting issue. And just, just for you, just so you know, I have to go up four and six times a year on the roof, which is not always safe either. Uh, I'm getting older, and I, I really am getting maybe a little less risk tolerant. What does a prudent and reasonable person do? Follow the advice of an expert on redwood trees, recognize the danger posed by the unique tree with unusually and uniquely large branches. Mike Janai does not, I'm gone.
Two minutes. I really don't have a lot to add, we've been doing this since two thousand twelve, when our neighbors, when we moved in, one of the first thing they asked us to do is do something about this tree. We're like, okay, wha- what do you mean? We came to the city, they said no. We said, okay, we went to tree, Lewis Tree Service, and did the trimming, did the pruning, what's being recommended now. And last year, we had storms that finally came through our community, and the branches were falling down. I think that we, as citizens of the city and homeowners, have a right to feel safe in our home. I think our neighbors have a right to feel safe in their home, in their front yard. They don't have a backyard, they don't have a garage. The time they spend is always in the front of the um, their home. And it's not okay to, if it's a little windy, don't go outside. When, on the November the twenty-sixth, we called them when the branch came down, hit our house. We said, Robert Missy, we just had a large branch come down, be careful. They came over and they said, yeah, we had guests over for dinner, we asked, where did they park? I said, please park, you know, right in front of our house. They said, no, 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 you can't park there, 'cause you, we don't know what that tree is going to do. Huge branch came down.
Thank you. We'll answer questions. And thank you for extending our time without making us feel like.
Beeping at me. I only had thirty seconds.
I have no questions.
No questions? Councilmember Bertrand?
So, um, I was interested in the reduction in diameter that was pointed out in the Janey report, and, oh, hmm. How clear is that?
It's clear. I mean, he, he did, well, let's, let me say it again. Uh, he has gone there multiple times at this point, all on his own, much like you have. He's, you know, he, we didn't know Mike Janai. You know, this is a very circum, you know, just happenstance, uh, meeting with him. And uh, he, yeah, so he's been over there three or four or five times, and the last time, I think with the, he just saw the, this, the, the opening seems to be bigger for some reason. I, I don't think things have fallen, but it just seems, maybe the way branches are more weighted now with the growth, it just seems more open than it was. And so, you could really see it, it's about forty feet up, and it goes down probably about a foot at least in, in diameter, yeah, over about, I don't know, maybe six feet, seven feet?
So, to, you know, a little experience with redwood trees, and I don't normally see that kind of change in diameter. I've seen them on Doug firs and, and other, maybe pines even, but not on fir, I mean, excuse me, not on redwood trees. Did he comment on that?
He did. In his second letter, he bel, he, he says there are several things that could have done it, all of which have happened. The construction of the home and the cutting of all the roots around it. The work on the tree, which would have probably severed the roots in the sidewalk that was put in in ninety-four as well, so, you know, the, there's not a continuous sidewalk there, so I'm sure that that sidewalk was put in when, uh, when Dicky built that house in ninety-four. So, that would have cut that side of the redwood tree roots. Yeah.
So, he felt that was a weakness?
He thought that potentially it was a place for breakage, yeah? Or at least that's what it seemed to imply in his letter, for me.
Okay, and is that the spot where, you know, 'cause I?
This is where all these trees are, where all the failures are happening.
Right at that spot?
Right at that spot.
Okay. Thank you. I did have a question that I asked earlier. So, why is the tree weighted more on your neighbor's side?
Yeah, we, I, I think why is that you saw that our house is in close proximity to the tree?
Yes.
And it was overhanging, so when they tipped almost every single branch in two thousand twelve, they took out some, but they also tipped all of the remaining branches, almost. It's very obvious, by the way, if you look. And so, they took more off our side because of that, because they were over our house.
Okay, they concentrated there.
Well, they, yeah, well, it was just, yeah, it wasn't, and we did some on the other side. It's just that it was, it's, our house is only eleven feet from the trunk of the redwood tree. So, the canopy was well over, it was like twenty feet, the trees were, the branches were going twenty feet over our, our house.
Vice Mayor Brooks, any questions?
Yeah, I just have one. After the pruning took place in two thousand twelve, was there a recommendation to prune in the last seven years, from then to now? Was that?
Well, the co, I, well, let me see, I, I don't know, there, we spent twenty-three hundred dollars.
In two thousand twelve?
In two thousand, well, thir, twelve, thirteen, it was around there, I forget when it was, it was around there. When we first moved in, it was two thousand twelve, and our neighbors um asked us, because this tree had not been maintained at all. The, the branches were forty or fifty feet long, they were over the tree into the street, I mean, over the sidewalk into the street growing, literally, they were touching the ground. And so, and they told us about the branch failures. We didn't know, because it was summer. And so, we asked the city, the city said no, and so, we hired Lewis Tree Service. Mike Hernan is the arborist, who is a certified arborist, just like James Allen, and he was in charge of pruning, tipping the tree appropriately. And as far as we knew, the twenty-three hundred dollars did it. This tree grows extremely fast because it had been topped, and so then all the growth happens at the branch level below it. And that's part of the problem, these branches are huge, some of these uh branches are fourteen inches in diameter.
Right.
They're, 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 you know, good-sized lo, trees. And so, um.
Let me ask this a different way. How often, and I don't know if you know this, where I'm, um, how often is one required to tip? The, the le, like, is this a process?
Apparently sooner than six years.
Six, okay.
Well, apparently sooner.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear you.
Let's say four, to, if, if, I mean, and I don't know if it's gonna work, honestly, so, but let's say every four years, twenty-three hundred bucks.
Okay. Katie, do you?
I can tip it every three years. Take twenty-five percent of the tree every twenty, every.
At twenty-three hundred dollars every three years or so?
So, James Allen, I, when I spoke with him yesterday, he said his recommendation would be probably every eight to ten years on tipping.
So, that doesn't work. That doesn't work.
Was that the extent of your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Story, do you have any questions?
Can I, sorry, can I expound on that reply by James Allen for a second?
Uh, recommendation from staff or city attorney? One additional time?
I think it's your discretion.
Yeah. Uh, one minute, please.
Oh, this won't take one minute. So, um, he showed other, in his letter, he showed other redwoods in the area in Santa Cruz, and he said, oh, every eight to ten years, you can tip it, they just, it's looked, just fine, it'll be fine, don't worry about it. Well, this tree is in a position on the marine headland of Capitola, where redwoods don't grow. The other trees are further back, they don't get the salinity burn, they don't get the winds that we experience. And so, the, and this tree is, as I said, genetically larger than all these other trees he's talking about. So, eight to ten years isn't gonna work. So, you're asking me, if I were, if you're to say, no, we're not gonna take it down, uh, twenty-three, it's probably be about a thousand dollars a year maintenance for me, for the rest of.
Thank you. Councilmember Story, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, I just have some, some quick questions, and it's in line with uh what Vice Mayor Brooks had asked. So, if I'm understanding correctly, there was a tree trimming in twenty, in two thousand twelve?
Yeah, late, twenty thirteen, right around there.
Uh, two thousand twelve, twenty thirteen, uh, after the incident, where, where there was.
So, there were no incidences then?
There was not a fall in two thousand thirteen?
Our, our neighbors said that there had been incidences, and the tree was just a mess, so, if something had to be done.
And then there was, and then between two thousand twelve and two thousand nineteen, there were, there were no incidences of a failure?
No, that's not true.
Well.
No, 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 no.
All of those pictures were from two thousand nineteen?
No, no, that's not true, it's just that they, they weren't to this magnitude. So, there have been branch failures, uh, just not to this magnitude, and the size of these is just, yeah, but, but yes, there have been the, branch failures.
Okay.
Of pure, although, every year, there's been branch failures.
And is there an indication of the cost to remove the tree?
Uh, yes. Seven thousand dollars, I, I mean, I'd like to go to Big Creek and see if they can have the tree and take it away from me for nothing, but I don't know if they're gonna do that.
Okay. All right, uh, I think that's all the questions from the council, we thank you uh for, for presenting that to us. Uh, at that time, uh, if there are any other members of the public that would like to address the con, the council on this matter, now would be the time. Hi, welcome.
Hi. I'm uh Robert Briganti, I'm Mike's neighbor at forty-nine-ten Capitola Road. This is my wife, Missy. We live underneath the tree, pretty much in our front yard, as you could see by the pictures. Most of the branch failures have been falling onto our property, and when you saw the pictures of the branches over the fence, those were actually on top of our garbage cans. And one of those branches fell about. And one of those branches fell about five minutes after my wife took out the garbage. So it's really a safety issue for us, like Mike also said. When we had friends over the other night, we had to make sure nobody parked in our driveway. They had to go park down the street in case a branch fell. And then later that night, the branch did fall. It fell onto Mike's house, but still it's, you're always wondering when there's a storm, rain, winds, even light winds, if a branch is going to fall on you. And it's not like, you know, a little branch on a little tree in your backyard. These branches could be considered trees by themselves. They're that large. That's all. Thank you.
Any other member of the public that would like to address the council on this issue? Saying none, we'll bring it back to the council for deliberation. We'll start with Councilmember Bator.
Thanks. Thank you for coming in and presenting your case on the tree. There's a, the findings that we are, you know, given guidelines to, to come up with here are pretty substantial. But when I look at the pictures and when I did the site inspection, looking at the tree, a couple of things were obvious to me. One, the tree's a hazard. Two, the tree's a nuisance. And three, it's inevitable that sometime more branches are going to fall and, and now we're just playing roulette with whether somebody's going to get hurt. There was a comment in the letter that said, trees like this belong in the forest, and that's what I believe. We've had problems with redwood trees close proximity to houses, lifting their roots. You know, the, we love redwood trees. It's part of California, but they belong in remote areas where we can enjoy them. And this one is not in that proximity. I believe that the pruning, the topping of the tree caused some other effects to that tree. The first effect is it makes it look hideous. The tipping will continue to do things like that and what we're trying to do is shove ten pounds of tree in a five pound bag and it's not going to work. This, this tree is just not, doesn't have the shape of a tree. It doesn't, doesn't pose any benefit to the community as far as I'm concerned. In fact, I'm pretty adamant that it promotes a safety hazard. We just got done closing a well-walked path on Depot Hill because we were fearful of residents being exposed to hazards that we couldn't predict. Trying to predict the fall of a seawall is trying to predict the fall of a branch. So I'm completely convinced and I find findings under safety that this, I would go against the staff recommendation and allow the applicants to remove the tree.
Councilmember Petron?
So the staff followed our rules and regulations in this regard and I thank you for doing the job. I think, according to what the arborist said, you came to the correct conclusion. I was sitting, I was in Boulder Creek and basically our property was two lots and a lot of redwood trees and I was just sitting out on the redwood trees, reading a book by the river. And I happened to get up because I wanted to get a drink or something like that. And as I started to walk away, I heard the crack, not knowing what it was, but it was the crack of a branch. And as I turned away, the branch fell a couple of feet away from where I was. My foot could have been impaled. So it's not an unusual circumstance in a forest that things do fall. We did have a tree topped on our property. It was a Doug fir. And the branches did grow out further and they appeared to be much larger in diameter because that's the only place where the growth could go. I think that's what happened with this particular tree. I think the trees were designed to hold a certain weight, but if the growth is no longer able to go high, then the weight is distributed and the growth is distributed to the branches and that's probably why these branches are failing. So I feel that the past treatment of this tree has led to the current problem and I'm in support of cutting the tree down.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Brooks?
Was that a motion by-
I haven't heard any motions yet.
Okay. I am in agreement with my counterparts here that this is a safety hazard and I would be going against the staff recommendation.
Councilmember Story?
Thank you. I think we're starting to see a trend here. I, I just want to say, you know, trees are important to us. That's why we have this ordinance to make sure that only in appropriate circumstances are they taken down. And I view this to be one of those appropriate circumstances. I don't think there's any question here that this constitutes a safety hazard. And as well, as we've seen from the evidence, it has caused unreasonable property damage. So the safety factors have been, element has been met in this situation. And in my view, the only question was, have all alternatives been considered and applied to try to save the tree? And, and it appears that, and the issue is about the trimming. And all the discussions about that has, you know, the topping that has created problems and even the tipping. The arborist suggests, and, and also I'm, I mean, my decision is also weighed by, I'm unclear about what the arborist is saying is that reasonable alternative. He doesn't clarify whether, I mean, he seems to be saying that tipping is what needs to be done, but we've just seen that the limbs that came down, they had already been tipped. And those limbs that came down were tipped. And my experience with trees, that when you tip them, they tend to sprout at that very point, which is going to create weight at that end. So I don't see how that is going to solve this problem. And I think that when we're faced with a potential safety situation, it's not incumbent upon the city to tell residents to bear that risk. And I think the, the case has been made. And I, you know, and I, and this is also an environment where we're PG&E because of reoccurring wind conditions, have been shutting off our power in terms of safety so that trees don't come down and break power lines. So I think that we're in an era of atypical storms. And, and I, I just, I, I don't in good conscience think I can say to the residents and the neighbors that live there that you can't take appropriate actions for your own sense of, not only your actual safety, but your also sense of safety. Because sometimes if you don't feel safe, you're not safe whether you really are or not. And so, you know, and I think for all those reasons, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the applicant's appeal and, and, and give them a permit to take down the tree, subject to our ordinance saying that you have to replace that tree with, you know, appropriate other trees for the, for your residents. Yes?
Yeah. You have to, if there's not thirty percent canopy coverage on the lot, you need to replace it a two to one ratio, so.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'll second.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment if you'd, if you'd allow.
Oh, sure.
I'm, I feel that this homeowner has been through a lot of duress with this project. I would, I would have liked to have seen this handled at the planning commission level. I, I would like to make a friendly amendment that their appeal fee be refunded to them for coming to the city council.
I accept that.
I agree.
A friendly amendment.
If you weren't, couldn't do that, I was going to do that because they've gone through a lot.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I have a comment.
Okay, thirty seconds.
Okay, thirty seconds. I'd like to reiterate what was in the appellant's letter in terms of they tried to make this front of the house a rather nice place, even under the tree. So they're trying to make that a sense of, a sense of beauty around there and I recognize that. And because of that, I recognize that they've done a lot also to try to keep this tree. It's had an important part of their life and the property there. So I don't think you're taking this lighthearted. I think this is a serious decision on your part and I just want to recognize that.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move on to item ten B, Report on Emergency Declaration from December third, 2019. Staff report. Hi, Steve.
Good evening, mayor and council. Quick report here on some emergency actions we had to take following the heavy rains over the Thanksgiving weekend. And I think I'm just going to start with a bunch of pictures because I think that tells the story better. Having on December second, which was the Monday following Thanksgiving weekend, over that weekend, we had seven inches of rainfall. We had rain falling on December second. And we got a report of this damaged pathway along Grand Avenue. This is in a section that in 2017, the council had closed because of ongoing slope failures in this area. It actually reduced the pathway, the failures had occurred right up to the fence line at this point. So we had anticipated, we hired a geologist back in 2017 who told us further failure was imminent in this area. He predicted some point in the next five years. Two years was the right number. So this failed, this pathway was closed already. But the thing to notice here is the runoff, which used to travel along this pathway, was now dumping into this open hole. And if we look at the aerials here, this is the pathway that pictured before was taken from this side. So all that runoff was coming down here and you can see the accelerated erosion it was causing in the slip-out area. And just a quick thank you to Misha Burch and Dave Friday, who have been our drone pilots and provided me with lots of drone footage of this failure in other parts of Depot Hill. Unfortunately, their photos have all been mixed up, so I'm not exactly sure whose are whose anymore. But thanks to both of them for helping us out here. So this map, a little harder to see here than I was hoping, but as you can see, these yellow lines are where the drainage used to go. So the drainage would come down Hollister, then travel along that pathway, past where the hole is now, and into a drainage inlet that had an outfall down on the bluffs. So with the, obviously with the failure here, that drainage was dumping into the hill. So what we did is we hired a contractor, come in and install a clean out or a drainage inlet and outfall at Hollister intercepting probably ninety-five, ninety-six percent of the flow that was going down that pathway to prevent further erosion just caused by the discharge of water into that hole. So here's the contractor we hired, starting work. It was all hand dug at this point because we didn't want to use heavy equipment out there. You can see they tied themselves off to a, to a backhoe, just in case the cliff decided to give way. They were very, very diligent. They started work on December fourth and by December sixth, prior to any more rains come, they had completed this new inlet. They did this paving to make sure that all of the flows in this area drained into this inlet, including a berm here to prevent flows from going down the pathway or over the cliff face. And here's another aerial from our drone pilots. And you can see this black pipe coming down here. The key to these pipes are from, I think this is the level, up to here, we have loose topsoil, probably a better name for it, but topsoil that's highly erodible. And below this point, we have sandstone, which is subject to waves, but it's, it's not affected by the runoff. So it's important that we extend this outfall down into the sandstone area, which you can see we did here. So just to kind of recap, on December third, following the discovery on December second, the city emergency services director, also knows our city manager, issued a local emergency proclamation, authorizing immediate actions to abate the flow of water into the failed slope. On December fourth, a contract was awarded to Anderson Pacific Engineering Contractors for the construction of the drain inlet and outfall at the end of Hollister Avenue. Anderson Pacific completed the work on December sixth. And we do not have a final cost, but it's somewhere in the twenty thousand dollar range, the cost of the project. So our recommendations tonight are to receive this report and to authorize the expenditure of measure F funds within the capital improvement program fund for this emergency work. And just to update you on there, currently there's about over a million dollars in measure F funds in the capital improvement program. These measure F funds are earmarked for ocean resiliency projects. The two that we're working on actively is the Flumen Jettie project and the Wharf project. We have sufficient money for the Flumen Jettie project, which we anticipate going out to bid in 2020. The Wharf project's still a couple of years away by the time we get it permitted. And in either case, the estimated twenty thousand dollar expense for this emergency pair will not impact either of these projects. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Bator?
Yeah, there was a letter we received from the coastal commission. Is that able to be, I know it was in our packet, is that able to be pulled up? Was there a letter that we got from the commission about this?
Yeah, I don't have it to present on the screen. I'm sorry.
I could put it up on the screen in a second. I'm concerned about comments in there from the coastal commission to us. I don't have a letter in front right now, so I can't remember what they were. If I see the letter, it's- It's going to take me a minute, unfortunately.
Should we come back to you?
Yeah, we can, yeah, well, they're, they're pumped a letter, unless, unless you had the same concerns.
I, I do. I was going to ask those questions.
Then you know what, I'm going to defer to Councilman Story and he can carry this ball.
And I, I have the letter on my phone here.
Okay, good.
And, and maybe I, I could just ask Steve each question that the coastal commission brings up. The first item that they bring up is that they want that, or they, I think they're recommending that the asphalt that's remaining in that area, the wooden, the fence, the parts of it that fell, they're suggesting that those be removed. Is that a feasible project to do? Is that worth the effort?
I certainly have safety concerns with putting people out in that area. And I've talked to the coastal commission staff who wrote the letter and she understands that. She likes to make a, a best effort at doing that, but understands that there's safety concerns with going in and working in that area.
Okay. Well, I would certainly, I mean, if there was any intent to move in that direction, that maybe that should be brought back to us so that we can seriously discuss that. The other items that they mentioned, there were three of them. And one is examining what level of storm, ten-year, twenty-year, the current drainage would accommodate, was one question. And also number two was to consider any other additional drainage efforts up on Depot Hill to prevent further collapses of the bluff. And the third one was the feasibility of reclaiming the public right-of-way that moves into, I think, some of those residents' current backyards. So those were the points that the coastal commission raised. And I was just wondering if staff was prepared to respond to them now or whether he was planning on maybe bringing this back at a later date.
So those are responses that'll go with our, when the coastal permit goes to the planning commission is when we need to have those responses. I do not have prepared responses for them at this time. Obviously, the determining the capacity of the drain inlet takes a little bit of topographical information to figure out how big an area we're draining and, and some engineering calculations, so I haven't done that. Regarding reestablishing the footpath and reclaiming our right-of-way, my recommendation would be that the council continue to keep it closed. I don't feel like that's an area, right now, the failures are probably within a foot of the property lines in certain areas, so there's no room without starting to try and claim private property to reopen that pathway. And we can reiterate that as part of a report when it goes to the planning commission. And third item, can you remind me what the third item was?
Well, actually, the reclaiming was the third item, but, but the second item was about evaluating whether drainage projects on other parts of the cliff should be done to prevent failures in other locations.
Thank you for reminding me. Certainly, we've done some drainage, drainage studies up on Depot Hill, probably about ten years ago, and looked at ways to capture all the street drainage and take it away from the bluff. That's a multimillion dollar project and, you know, take all the drainage and take it down to Monterey Avenue. So it really hasn't gotten much headway because of the significance. You'd be building an entire new drainage system up there on Depot Hill. We did work with the Geological Hazard Abatement District, who had hired somebody to look at what the best way to deal short-term with the drainage is up there. They're the ones that came up with that design of the outfalls going down to the sandstone down there. So we, when that study came out, we did go in and refurbish the existing drainage inlets at that time, to put that kind of system in, and we've been maintaining that type of system on the other ones. Certainly, we can look at it, but, you know, doing an extensive drainage improvement project up there is very expensive.
Right. So you mentioned that you were gonna respond to the Coastal Commission when you make the permit application. Will that be coming back to us before that goes off?
So the coastal development permit is issued by the Planning Commission. It can get appealed to the council, or we can certainly bring it back and report back, if that's what you'd like. But the permit itself would be issued at the Planning Commission level.
Okay, and so the responses to those Coastal Commission questions and statements are gonna go to the Planning Commission, and they will deal with it.
Go ahead.
I think the responses would go to the Planning Commission. Any obligation that becomes a city obligation, in other words, in something that would result in us incurring new costs or embarking on a new program, that would come to the City Council. So that's not something the Planning Commission could, for example, commit us to a drainage master plan for the Depot Hill community. That would need to come to the Council. So I think that we have been looking at a lot of these things and having these conversations with the Coastal Commission for a number of years, and we see things a little bit differently than they do. So I think most of the responses, we will be providing them in the CDP, will be explaining to them why what they're asking for is relatively infeasible. Obviously, if there's something we can do to accommodate what are their asks, we'll identify that. But if it does result in a new expenditure or program, that would go to the Council.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Brooks?
So the estimated costs, you said were about $20,000. The work was completed on the 6th, it's the 19th now. Is there any updates on that?
Unfortunately, no. It takes them a while to get all their billing together and trucking in, and subconsultants that they use, so...
Okay, and then, so this fix is somewhat of a short-term fix, and kind of what the Coastal Commission was saying was an idea for a long-term solution. Are there any other solutions being looked at at this time?
So I consider this, like I said, the design of this type of outfall was something that had been promoted along Grand Avenue. There are no active projects to try and do any other drainage improvements up there at this point. We can certainly talk about that as we look at our CIP and funding. Like I said, about a decade ago, we did do a drainage study that identified what to do, but the costs are quite prohibitive.
Okay, and then, just to reiterate, the measure funds are not restricted funds, and can be used on ocean resiliency projects? Is that the term?
Yeah, Measure F funds are general fund dollars. We just identify them as Measure F, because they were, when that measure was passed, we kind of earmarked them for ocean resiliency projects and other necessary city functions, so...
Okay, and has there been any direct impact on the residents who live right there? I mean, obviously, there has been, but is there any, anything that the city is doing to talk with them, or do we need to be worried about them legally on the ways that we're handling these?
So one of the neighbors, most near the slope failure, has installed a plastic sheeting over the area, and I've talked with him. He has concerns about the safety of the rest of his property. I shared with him that, you know, any small things or immediate things we can do, we would look at, but ultimately, the protection of that is gonna fall to the property owners, as it becomes to impact their private property.
So I'm hearing that this is it for now, and we don't have a timeline on dealing with it in the future, in the near future?
There's no direction to do any other additional work at that time up in Depot Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Boter.
So when the study was done, with the Jihad group and the drains were identified as options, okay. So are they designed for worst-case flows?
No, it was more of a function of the existing pipes that we could fit into the existing systems to extend them. So the old DI's used to just daylight out on the bluff slope itself, and erode that highly erodible topsoil material. So this was a, something we could fit into the existing system. They are not designed, I don't know what year storm they're designed for. I suspect it's somewhere between a ten and a twenty-year storm. But what will result is localized ponding up on those streets until they're empty. It's not something where they're gonna flood. A hundred-year storm, there's gonna be a lot of flooding, but they're certainly not designed for that.
Okay, yeah, 'cause my concern is, you know, can the outflow handle a worst-case scenario, and what would happen to the water? You're saying it would flood, I mean, excuse me, it would puddle to some extent, but it might spill over the edge, too?
That is possible, on a big enough storm, yes.
Okay. I did do a tour of the Beladzitz property at the end, with that little bed-and-breakfast hotel-type thing is. And their attempt to address that situation was they planted the side of the hill, and, you know, I got a sort of a over-the-view top look, and he hasn't complained of any erosion since then, after the plants started growing. So I don't know if that's a solution for this case.
Councilmember Boter, if any questions?
No.
No? Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address us on this matter? Saying none, we'll bring it back to the council for deliberation.
Comments?
Comments.
Okay. Thanks for filling in the pieces there, Councilman Story. I've got this letter from the Coastal Commission. It was quite alarming to me. The city manager put it more eloquently than I would, to say that we don't see eye-to-eye with the Coastal Commission is an understatement. For trying to do things, I believe I'd like to try to do things for our bluff, to preserve our bluff, for our citizens, for our homeowners, for those that like to use public access, which is what the Coastal Commission purportedly advertised, that that's their goal. What they wrote in this letter is, is the comment, Councilman Story said there were three, but the one I was focusing on was it's to examine the feasibility of reclaiming the public right-of-way to allow for a through-public pathway, even if such path could only exist for a relatively short planting horizon, five to twenty years. You know, we're trying to do projects in this county, we're trying to protect our county for the future, to, if you talk, we're gonna get a presentation a little bit later about long-term water planting for a hundred years. And to suggest that we want to do something for five years is ludicrous. We, people on that path, when it fell, thought that it was gonna be stable for five or ten years, and we needed to reopen it immediately. And here we are, less than two years later, it fell back into the ocean. What we need is some kind of a commitment for the Coastal Commission, that we want to address how we're gonna save our bluff permanently. So the letter I would like to see the city write to the Coastal Commission, if we're gonna do such a thing, and I'm not saying that we need to do it here, but if there's any way that we respond, they say they would like us, they're asking us to respond to them, we encourage you to recommend us, is that Capitola is looking for a long-term solution. And I recently gave the city management information about a seawall trail that was built in Carlsbad. It's called the Carlsbad Seawall Trail, which you can look up on the internet. And they built a sixteen-foot-high, 1.4-mile pathway, ten feet wide, all along the access that allows public access, which is supposed to be the intention of the Coastal Commission, and would fit perfectly into Capitola in that situation, and probably lead to solving our problem. And the reason I bring it up is that we're in constant communication with the Coastal Commission, and part of the, we're trying to adopt our LCP, is that correct?
Yes.
And recently, Santa Cruz was just trying to adopt their LCP, and they halted it because they inserted some language that they put in at the last minute, that says that as part of the Coastal Commission accepting their LCP, that they would be allowed to build a Carlsbad Sea Trail from downtown Santa Cruz to Forty-first Avenue. And I think that when we get to that point, when we start getting back on that, that we should include some kind of language in that, too. So I'm just kind of put off by the Coastal Commission demanding that we do this in response to this small fall. And the problem is, is that although it was a very good repair we did there, it's a Band-Aid, Steve, is what we did. We stopped a situation that could've got a lot worse because of the eroding, but, you know, we're pretty much helpless with what we're doing there. And I just, I just want us to write a letter that has a little bit more oomph in it than what they're requesting here. And that kind of segued off of what the topic is, but the topic is, is this is an approval for the use of Measure F funds, and I make a motion that we approve staff recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, and we'll bring it back to staff for continued discussion. Councilmember Boter?
That's it. Anything more?
I'm good, I'm good, thank you.
Nothing? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, I'm done.
Councilmember Boter? Vice Mayor Brooks? Councilmember Story?
If I may, I'd just like to thank the city's staff and Steve Public Works for getting out there so quickly, and with, for Anderson Pacific, thanking them, because it was truly remarkable how quickly you guys out there and dealt with that, and able to maybe forestall any further damage to it. Now, I don't, you know, we have now plastic flapping around up there, and I'm not sure quite what good it's doing, other than maybe eventually falling into the ocean. So hopefully, we could maybe either find a way to secure it, or maybe remove it, and find some other alternative. And maybe just thinking about, and, you know, for the residents up there, about doing some planting and vegetation, something like that, you know, maybe that's the affordable and reasonable thing to maybe try to do at this stage. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I will just make a comment briefly, that I agree with what was previously mentioned about the comments from the Coastal Commission. It's rather concerning that they would be expecting us to reopen the path, especially in looking at the pictures. And I will say that I believe it was in 2017, when I and several of the residents up on that path held kind of a, an ad hoc citizens' working committee to look at the potential for very long-term solutions for preventing this from ever happening again. And it was multimillion dollars, and included seawalls, drilling into, rock bolts, drilling into the wall. And we believed at that time also that the Coastal Commission would not approve something like that. And so the idea that we should now take up almost the entire backyards of the citizens that live along that path to attempt to reopen it is quite concerning and alarming to me to see that letter. So I echo my fellow councilmembers' comments on that. With that, there is a motion and a second for the approval of the Measure F funds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item G, excuse me, 10C, receive update report on the construction of the Capitola branch library.
This is our every-other-month update on the project on Wharf Road, constructing a new library. So a quick construction update. Recently completed items included installation of the roof trusses, waterproofing and rain, waterproofing of the roof and rain leaders. Mechanical and electrical plumbing stubouts are being installed, are installed throughout the building now. And winterization of the site was completed. Upcoming work includes starting to install exterior siding materials and interior wall construction. To date, looking at the construction costs, the current value of the contract is $11,652,747. This is an increase from our last report of $17,674 for a contract change order number four, which was issued per our policy, which allows us to issue change orders up to $50,000 without council authorization. This was a change order that cleaned up some of, there was some unusable fill material that needed to be removed, and some stormwater investigation and work that needed to be done as we got into the project. To date, we have paid, or there's been expenses of $4,889,995. Ninety-five percent of that goes to contractor, and five percent is held in with retention, will be released upon significant completion of the project. That constitutes forty-two percent of the contract is now complete. Since the contract was awarded and construction began, we've had eighty-five days of rain that have extended the contract timelines. We're, in addition, we're beginning to see and feel delays caused by the conflict with the power lines, which I can touch on a little bit here. The projected opening remains midsummer of 2020. That may begin to slip a little, as depending on the, how quickly we can address the conflict with the power lines. So I'll move right into that. As you know, we are working to underground the utilities, the power and AT&amp;T lines that run along Wharf Road, that are in conflict with the building itself. Earlier this week, after waiting nearly six months, PG&E finally provided a design for their portion of the project. City staff reviewed it, and we immediately noted some emissions on their plan, which they are now working on. Conduit installation, so PG&E will come in and pull wires through conduits that we have to put in place, and they'll place their equipment on pads that we pour. So we are working on getting costs for that work, the conduit installation at this time. We're talking with several companies to try and get some, I don't wanna say we're bidding it out, because it's gonna be a change order to the library project, but we're trying to make sure we're paying the right amount for the conduit installation. And we also still need to get costs from AT&amp;T to pull their, install their new equipment down below, down underground, so we have not received those costs yet. We anticipate getting all this together early in January. At least, that's our goal at this point, since we have the PG&E plans that now we're making work off of. And negotiations with the architect and their design team on our errors and emissions claim will be, will proceed in January. And at that point, when we have more information on the final costs and those negotiations, we will return to council immediately and get, and fill you in, and try and get some direction on how to proceed forward. A little lighter note, furniture selection did occur. The architect, their interior design staff, library staff, the ad hoc design committee, and city staff have completed selection of the furniture. Happy to report that furniture upgrades have been made possible by the success of the fundraising campaign. They've put in about, I think it's $20,000 to make sure we get the best furniture we can. Furniture will be bidding in early 2020, so that we can get it purchased and delivered to coincide with the construction. I know there's pictures in the agenda report of all the furniture. I do not, I can pull them up if you're interested, they're not part of the report here, but if you'd like to see some of the pictures, I can pull those up. And in this report, we kind of alternate between giving you a revenue update and an expenditure update. So this year, this month, we're giving you a revenue update. The second called from the left is the original budget, where we had a total of $15,150,000 budgeted through various funds from Measure S, the Successor Agency General Fund, donations, library fund. At the time we awarded the contract, we did have an unfunded portion of $36,000, which we were very confident we could make up as we moved through the project. As you can see, since that time, we have had changes. Some were pretty small, others have been much better. So Successor Agency went up in the general fund contribution. Those are more fixing, rounding differences that were made in doing the actual transfers. Big news is on December, earlier in this month, the County Board of Supervisors approved an allocation from the county library funds, which included a $213,337 allocation to our project. This was not anticipated in the original budget, so we brought that in. And then, the city treasurer was given authority to invest in, with our money that we have sitting on this. So today, we have investment earnings of $130,000. That's to date. He anticipates that to go up another $20,000, $30,000 before we're done with this project. So those are additional revenues that we hadn't anticipated when we originally awarded the contract. So as you can see, from our original budget of $15,150,000, we've added $420,000, bringing the available funds to 15,434,397. At this time, we're not recommending any... At this time, we're not recommending any budget changes. The bu, project budget remains at fifteen million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But we do have surplus funding as of today of three hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Some good news. That concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions. There's no formal actions required tonight regarding the change orders or anything. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna bring it back to the council for questions. Councilmember Rotor.
Question. In addition to the three hundred and eighty-four thousand that is, let's just call it for now a surplus, how much is remaining in the contingency account?
The contingency bu, budget as of last month had five hundred and forty thousand dollars in it.
Thank you.
I assume PG&E has designed any underground projects, what were the issues that our staff discovered?
They've got to account for three streetlights that are connected to their system.
Their system, their streetlights, they forgot. Okay, thank you. I went by today, there was some streetwork at the corner, is this related?
The streetwork there is actually a county sanitation project that has been going on when the new pipeline that came from the SoCal pump station. They've run into a, some significant design problem in making the connection from the new pipe to the old pipe, which is why we've had plates and temporary asphalt out there. They've recently have come to the decision that they will not be able to work on that for the remainder of this winter. So they went out there and took out all the temporary paving and put in a permanent paving, but it's still just a patch and it's going to get redone. So we're kind of bewildered that they leave the streets so torn up for so long and been after them to do something. So we've only got them to do some paving out there.
Okay, great. So this will make a little bit easier for residents, are they going to take everything out or what?
It'll, you know, clean the street up quite a bit. They will be removing their equipment, which has been stored there for quite a few months now. But they will be back probably in the spring to, to kind of open it all up and, and make those final connections.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Brooks, questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Story, questions? All right, we'll bring it out for any member of the public that would like to address us on this matter. Saying none, we'll bring it back to council. And since this is just a report, is there any comments on the report?
I have one. I know this isn't the extensive list of all the furniture. And I just wanted, I've mentioned it before about going above and beyond the ADA requirements and really tapping into the universal design. And I know our city managers on this committee, and if it's still going out to bid, maybe just revisiting that with them. Just looking at some of the models here, it doesn't look like this is for all.
Yeah, I just gave you some examples, yes, but we'd be happy to review that.
Yeah, thank you. Any further comments from the council? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to item 10D, receive audit report for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Brooks and council members. As the mayor just said, this is for the fiscal year 2018, nineteen comprehensive financial, financial statements. And I have Mr. Ahmed Garibal from, he is a partner with E. Bailey, who is our external auditors here to do a brief presentation on the process that they went through.
Thank you for having me, just to confirm, I do have control over here for the PowerPoint presentation? Okay, I, I do not see it on this screen, but I guess if I move the arrow over here, it should work.
Jim, you have control.
Oh, I have control.
Okay, all right. Thank you, good evening. My name is Ahmad Gariba, I am the partner in charge of the city. This is the annual financial report for the city. It's the comprehensive annual financial report. We are the external auditors of the city. The scope of the audit is to ensure that the financial statements are fairly stated. We split the audit into three phases, the interim phase, the final phase, and then it's the reporting phase is what we call it towards the end. In the interim phase, we come in and we take a look at the controls, the manner that you process receipts, the manner that you process disbursements, contracting, payroll, HR, all kinds of functions. We want to see adherence to city policies with respect to those items. We do also test of compliance as well and test of controls. And then we come in at the, towards the final phase. It is a process in which we confirm the balances are reported to, to you on these financial statements. They were reported to you previously. We are the auditors, we just come in as an affirmation that the amounts that were reported to you are fairly stated. And therefore, what we do is a process of confirmation. So we confirm your, your cash, your debt, property taxes, sales tax revenue, various amounts are reported on the financial statements. And then the last phase of the audit, I'm sorry, we, we also do other procedures such as looking at significant estimates. You do have pension liabilities and op liabilities in common with many of the local governments that are out there. And then the final phase would be the reporting phase. This is the comprehensive annual financial report, so it adheres to government accounting standards board. It has specific reporting standards. In addition, the city does submit it to an agency called the Government Finance Officer Association. They interview in compliance with the reporting standards, the GASP reporting standards that the city did receive in 2019, I'm sorry, eighteen, and we anticipate that they're going to receive it in 2019 as well. We are required to report to you whether we noted any difficulties, any weaknesses in the internal control, any difficulties in the performance of the audit, or any adjustments to the financial statements that are material to the financial statements. And we noted none. Management has been very helpful in giving us the confirmation and connecting us with the agencies that are in charge of the various amounts that are reported on your financial statements. And we were able to complete the audit rather early. And with that, I'll be more than happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Very much. We've significantly been able to achieve award status. What do you feel in this case?
This is good. You know, the accounting industry in government had been drastically changing over the past, I want to say, four or five years. I don't know, Jim, we had like maybe forty Gaspys out of the ninety Gaspys that were issued in the past five years. And I, I want to say it, it changed drastically. So the pension numbers weren't reported before, now they are reported on the financial statements. Retiree health, they call it other post-employment benefits. And the manner that these are calculated, they're rather difficult. They're not, it's, it's not as easy as it used to be. But again, with, with management had been very cooperative, very helpful. And you know, these, these financial statements do adhere to the accounting and reporting standards and they are fairly stated.
Thank you.
I have two questions. There's nothing more than, than I love than reading an audit from start to finish. I love to do on a Monday night. Two questions. On, and this might be more for you. On page three twenty-four of the audit, there was a significant reduction from 2018 to nineteen on the miscellaneous intergovernmental and other revenues from four hundred and six thousand to a hundred and nineteen thousand? And that seems to be brand new in the ten-year span.
Yeah, so I think she's referring to page eight. So these statements that you see here, page eight on the CAFR, these statements that you see here are what they call full accrual financial statements. And they're a little different than the fund financial statements. And what's interesting in that CAFR is that the pension liability is not recorded in your general fund. It's recorded in this, what we call full accrual. It's a consolidation of all the funds alongside with these long-term numbers. And the change in the pension liabilities is what causes some of these fluxes that you see there in the financial statements.
Bear with me while I catch up. On page eight is the breakdown of what I'm looking at.
Yes.
On page three twenty-four, okay. And the line item you're looking at is?
Miscellaneous revenues.
Yep, got it.
So there's some numbers that gets reported by CalPERS and the city takes its proportionate share out of that pension liability. And the way that they are reported on the financial statements, they have this thing called deferred inflows, which is fluxes in the investment earnings with respect to the investments that are located with CalPERS. And therefore, you'll see some of these fluxes in there impacting these full accrual financial statements or consolidated financial statements.
Why have we not seen those influxes in the past year, it's just this year?
It, it depends on how it performs. So it's, it's how the pension amounts perform, how the op trust fund performs. And there are years where they had good years and there are years that are constant, I guess consistently the same from one year to the other.
So maybe this is for a later time, but I'd love to learn how that two hundred thousand dollar difference impacts our overall twenty-four million dollar budget? And if that's something we need to look at? And then my second question is, understanding the difference between the letters. So on page two ten, there's an initial letter, and then on page three forty-one, there's the December tenth letter. Let me catch up with myself here. December twelfth letter that we received. So there's one on two ten and then there's one on three forty-one that looked pretty similar. And so you mentioned phases, was this like phase one when that, and when, it wasn't dated, so I wasn't sure how this?
I, I didn't have the agenda, but I, I do remember sending a couple of letters. And then one is the communication with the city council. We are required in writing to tell you what the scope of the audit is.
Okay.
And whether we noted any difficulties in the audit or any findings with respect to the audit. So I assume that's the first letter. Probably the second letter is the again, I don't have the full agenda in there, so I'm not sure.
There's some, there are some findings in the December twelfth.
Yeah, so there's a past adjustment in there.
The two letters are the internal control letter and the communication with governance letter.
Yeah. So I, I think what you're referring to is maybe the past adjustment in there. Am I, I apologize, I don't have the full agenda in there, so I'm not sure.
Do you want me to pull up the two different letters? I think Finance Director is correct, one is the governance communication letter and the other is the internal control compliance letter.
And so were there any findings in the December twelfth?
No.
None?
No.
Does that conclude your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Story, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this audit. I guess the one thing that jumped out to me, and I'll refer you to page seven of the audit, it's Agenda Packet, page two sixteen, are our unrestricted net position.
Negative.
For 2019, yeah. A negative ten and a half million dollars.
Yes.
And as I understand it, all due to the unfunded pension liability. As hard as that is to swallow, what I do notice that there's about a million dollar improvement from 2018. So I guess my question is, what was the explanation for that million dollar improvement? Are we doing better with our pension liability? Or did we incur some additional unrestricted income?
It's actually the Dow Jones. So pension liability is basically a gross amount, less the investments is about, I don't know, half a trillion dollars invested in Sacramento with CalPERS. And it performed really well during that measurement period, so it drops. And that's what caused it to, it impacted your net position positively. And therefore, the number of, I guess the deficit equity had dropped as a result of the improvement in the investment earnings.
Okay. I guess that's good news, but it sounds like that's a pretty volatile basis on which to rely on.
Yes, so I, I.
A net, what I view as a net gain of a million dollars, but it could be ephemeral.
Yes, so the way that, that number is calculated, I do not want to make it too complicated, but we do have this line item right there on that same statement called deferred inflows of resources. And it's basically taking those unusual fluxes and smoothing them out gradually through that net position. So you didn't get the full credit for the investment performance, you would get it gradually over a five-year period. So if next year doesn't perform as well, then the number wouldn't flux as such. It's just that they're taking those fluxes and smoothing them out over a five-year period. So that improvement actually is a lot better than just one million dollars, I think is what the flux. It, it actually, if you look right there in the middle of the page, or if you look at the net pension liabilities, and I believe it's towards the back of the report, it did drop a lot more than just that one million dollars. But we didn't give the city the entire credit, we gave it a portion of that credit in accordance with the reporting standards.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good questions.
All right, thank you so much. We will return now to public comment, is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Saying none, we'll bring it back for council comment, and is there a vote on this? Nope, just receiving report, does anyone on the council have any comment on the report? Saying none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
All right. And our final item for the evening, item 10E, support a consolidated coastal development permit process for pure water SoCal. We have a staff.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Before we consider 10E, I live within five hundred feet of the site where SoCal wants to install the injection well, so I need to recuse myself.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, we'll wait just a minute.
She's trying to get home, really. Um, actually, what is the distance, because I'm very close out to you.
You're fine.
I am fine, thanks for checking. I thought it was pretty far away, but it's.
Good evening, council. Before you tonight is not a decision, it's, we will be looking for a recommendation, but not a decision. There is a project, which I'm going to let the applicant speak to the details of the project tonight. I just wanted to give you a brief overview of why we're here. Whenever there's a project that goes across jurisdictional boundaries within the coastal zone, rather than getting individual coastal development permits from each city, and they can apply for a consolidated permit in which the, the Coastal Commission will review the consolidated permits. We had a request from SoCal Water District for the Pure Water SoCal project to participate in that consolidated permit process, which is allowed under the Coastal Act. So one, one item, so they're looking for a recommendation from the city to allow that to occur. And in reading through the materials that they provided us in the EIR, I thought in our recommendation of suggesting that they go forward with the consolidated permit, that we bring in a few of the mitigation items. These would be covered regardless due to the EIR, but there's significant unavoidable noise impacts that were brought up in the report. And they're obligated to, for anybody that lives within two hundred feet of the well, that is the Monterey well site, they're obligated to provide or offer alternative accommodations. And just in, in the respect that typically when a CDP comes through the city, we go, we send out noticing to individuals and they have the opportunity to speak at our hearings. We did send out noticing for this hearing, for this meeting tonight, just to let them know that we're considering the consolidate, allowing the consolidated permit. But added two conditions, one that, or not conditions, but suggestions to the Coastal Commission that they include in their consolidated permit, that first, any properties within two hundred feet be noticed thirty days in advance. Have a meeting, a pre-construction meeting thirty days in advance, and that, at that meeting and within the letter, they address the option of alternative accommodations. And then second, within five hundred feet of, two hundred and one to five hundred feet of the Monterey site, the pre-construction notice would go out thirty days prior with all the emergency con, contact information for a while the project is being built. So with that, our recommendation tonight is to authorize a consolidated coastal development permit application to be reviewed by the Coastal Commission. We have Melanie Shoemaker here and Ron Duncan of SoCal Creek Water District.
Yes, thank you for having us tonight. And I'll just, I'll start it off with a quick note of appreciation. I think it's the season for your hard work and Katie and Matt's efforts with our staff were outstanding, so thank you on that. And I can't help but say, I see a police officer back here, we hold our meetings here, and they often are present, and we really appreciate that. So a shout out, and on a quick note, response, they come. And on a quick note, response, they come in and help us. So Melanie's gonna dive into the heart of this, which I know is about how we're communicating with your residents, our customers also. Uh, but I just wanna say a couple of things that you may not know. You know, in the big scale, Pure Water SoCal is an environmental, uh, project to prevent further seawater intrusion from further contaminating our, um, groundwater. So it's a, is a project to create, uh, safe, reliable groundwater in the future, now, and into the future for future generations. What you may not know is that, um, why we got wide community support. Just recently, uh, the EPA, federal EPA, awarded the project and the district, uh, forty-nine million dollar grant. And then on the heels of that, mainly due to Ms. Schumacher's efforts, uh, and others too, but you were the spearhead, um, the state water board showed their support in the tune of a fifty million dollar grant, that's fifty million. And then further, they said this is a kind of model project they wanna see throughout the state of California. They did, uh, they tacked on a thirty-six million dollar low-interest loan, like around 1.3%, which is fantastic. So I say that because our customers are your residents, and that's good news for them. Because it, you know, it helps them, uh, with their rates and that sort of thing, lower cost. So that's, that's the big picture stuff, and I, like I said, Melanie's gonna dive into the heart of this stuff I think you're interested about.
We just have a couple of slides, um, these are, of course, in the packet and in the requests that we sent to, um, the planning director. Um, here at, the picture that we have here on the screen is one of the primary seawater intrusion prevention wells of the Pure Water SoCal Project. This is the one that's located in Capitola, and it's actually an existing site that the SoCal Creek Water District currently owns. It's an inactive well, um, and it's tucked behind Shorelife Church where that arrow is that says the well site entrance gate. So this is a site that we've owned for a long time, it is, um, very tucked away and hidden. In the next picture I'll wanna show, the picture on the left is the existing site, so that, um, does have, um, some equipment and buildings that are associated with a groundwater extraction well. For a seawater intrusion prevention well, what we foresee we would do is, within the perimeter of our site, um, clear off almost everything that's above ground, so that what would be left in that right side, which is the conceptual rendering, is the, uh, the seawater intrusion prevention well piping, and some electrical and controls that are pushed up on the right side of the wall. The height of the ex- uh, proposed infrastructure once built is, has a very low profile. As you can see, it's basically somewhere between six and eight feet. Um, again, and most of the surrounding areas is, um, oh, that's a carport and a retaining wall from the Shorelife Church Apartments, and then the trees and shrubs, um, on the neighboring site. Um, I won't go into too many details, we can go ahead and and leave that for questions, but some of the, um, items of concern, especially as we go through and we build the seawater intrusion prevention well and the pipeline, is what kind of impacts we would have with the neighbors. So we have identified that most of the work would be associated with, um, the noise that is, that would happen during construction. So during the in, construction of the well site, we will have drilling that will go on for a couple of weeks, both day and at night. Um, that is done both from the integrity of the well being drilled, as well as just the kind of, uh, reduction in the overall impacts for the neighbors, is just to do it in a consolidated schedule. Um, there also will be noise during the time when we're doing the pipelines. But once the infrastructure is in place, which within this area of Capitola will be just pipelines and the well site, once construction is done, noise will be very minimal. Um, it, almost nothing, because the recharge well really is based upon more of a gravity flow from where the water is purified and then goes in there. There would be a small pump that we would have to run on a periodic basis, just to backwash, and again, that's pretty, pretty low noise. Um, but we recognize, and what Ron said, is we are part of, um, the neighborhood. Um, I'm a customer, I'm a resident in SoCal. Um, and so we, we recognize that we wanna make sure that the outreach that we do, that the relationship that we build isn't just about the planning efforts and as we go forward with permitting, but would also go on during construction. And so here, um, in this last slide is, um, just some pictures of our outreach that we've done in the past, during the environmental impact report phase. We had many community meetings, that's the picture on the left. The picture in the middle was actually a community meeting that we held at Shorelife Church, which is right next door, um, to the, uh, Monterey well site, and we had that meeting in November. And then the letter on the right, um, was letters that we sent to the nearby area to let them know that we are foreseeing and going forward with the construction. And as, um, Ms. Hurley said, we will be doing those letters again. That's a best management practice that the district has been doing every time we do do new infrastructure, um, just like the granite well that we did in Aptos. We went through that same series, we sent letters out prior to construction on a five-hundred-foot basis, and then we sent letters again in a more narrow, and had a community meeting. We also, well, we called these people, but I was talking about the, yeah, yeah. And then, um, what we also do is we send out contact information. So the neighbors in the nearby vicinity will have a direct line, twenty-four-hour line to our onsite geologist as the well is being drilled. And we also, um, are providing preventative, um, measures for noise, like, um, sound barrier walls during the drilling, and options for the nearby residents to stay at a hotel if they so choose during the twenty-four-hour construction. So we, you know, we continue to do that, I know that that is of, was of a concern and of high importance to staff, and and we wanna build that into our process. So as we go forward with the consolidated permit approach, and we we hope that you guys, um, would recommend that the Capitola would join in, and that the City of Santa Cruz and the County of Santa Cruz have already, um, submitted letters to the state that they are interested in doing that. And we have requested to, um, the Coastal Commission that we be put on their March agenda item, um, and so that would be a meeting that would be here in Scotts Valley. And we're, we're here for any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, we'll bring it back to the council for questions, Councilmember Story, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I, I guess I just wanted to clarify that even if we approve going with the consolidated application to the Coastal Commission, uh, we don't lose our voice during that process. We will just be more directly working through with the Coastal Commission staff at that time, is that, is that a correct understanding of?
We could submit public- Yeah.
We could submit comments to the Coastal Commission, or you could make comments now and request that they incorporate it into the project description, but we would in fact be turning over permitting authority to the Coastal Commission.
Okay, well, I guess this is the time to make comments then, uh, which, um, I'll reserve until later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Yeah, go ahead, you have a question?
I do. Um, so pursuant to your policy in terms of contacting neighbors, um, have you had conversations with the neighbors at this point?
We, we have had some conversations, I'll let Melanie dive into that particular, but I, I'd just like to say, this is what we do, we put in wells, and, um, we, we work with our neighbors, our customers, and so we've had great success, never really any issues on previous wells, so just to give you that setting, so what about this particular situation?
So if you've had quite, yeah, I'd just like to know some of the concerns that they brought up, and, uh, the nature of that conversation, was that on the phone, or did you go to their homes, or was there an actual meeting at the church nearby perhaps?
Sure, so we did send letters out, um, to, hold on, I forgot my notes, I wrote it on my hand. Um, two hundred-foot radius, um, back in November, that we were, um, going to be moving forward with the pre-design of the well site. And we did, um, follow up that with phone calls of the customers, um, that we had phone numbers for in our account system. And we did get quite a few voicemails, but on those that we did, um, connect with, I think that there were about a handful. Most of the concerns were just about when construction was going to occur, and what, what we foresaw what the impacts would be. And so we did tell them that there would be noise impacts, we did tell them that there would be, um, a duration of time where we would have to do the twenty-four-hour drilling. There were some concerns related to the number of trucks and equipment that would be coming in and out of the neighborhood, and when would, would that be, you know, how would that, how would the, the district handle that, would that be during school time? Um, what was the level of expectations that, that they may, that they may wanna know about beforehand? And, and that was about it from the, like, neighbors, house neighbors. When we had the meeting at the church, we, um, worked with the, uh, Pastor Trevor there. He notified all of the apartment, uh, complex residents there. Um, and of the, the few people that showed up, it really was more about noise, and, um, their request was that we have another meeting with them. Again, I think, you know, a lot of people have a lot of things on their plate, it's more about, you know, when the construction happens, will we be able to talk to them? And I think that's why staff has said, when we get to that point, because for us, the construction is still out a while, um, to still reserve that opportunity to meet with the neighbors, talk to them about the noise issues. And I think this is a, a proper way for staff to recommend that that be built in, to your recommendation, if you so choose, to go with that consolidated permit approach, so that you, you still have that kind of connection that the district will be notifying and working with your residents.
Okay, um, so I know a lot of the neighbors around there, and many of the families there have children. Gonzalez's, I think, are right on the other side of the fence from the well. Uh, there's two families there that actually have children, and, um, across the street is a daycare center, so it could be quite disruptive for the kids there, perhaps, and I definitely hope you contact them.
Yeah, you know, the, the, uh, a te- a well that we recently did was right adjacent to the school, and I remember Melanie talk about, uh, that uses an opportunity to help, uh, educate the kids, and talking about the smiling faces at the fence line, I believe is what you mentioned, kinda captured me. So we have experienced exactly that, uh, situation, and it turned into, we made what could perceive as a negative experience into a, a good cooperative learning experience, and no negative feedback on that, so just.
Yeah, yeah, pursuant to our conversation, we had a conversation, I think, two days ago. So, um, I mentioned to the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent of the Unified School District, that you did have that experience with the people at, um, Twin Lakes, the, the school at Twin Lakes, and she thought it was a great idea, so, uh, they're gonna be waiting for your call.
Well, and we've, I've already asked our staff member who conducted some of these meetings when as we get closer to reach out to the school.
Great, great.
We also, um, have, it seems like schools are in neighborhoods just like our well sites, so, uh, the Willowbrook site is also right next to a school, the Montessori School, and then our Twin Lakes Church Pilot Well that we did over the summer was next to the Twin Lakes Church. So, um, we'll definitely make sure that we engage and prioritize, um, nearby schools.
Yeah, my main concerns with the kids that would have to live through, I mean, sleep perhaps, through the drilling, so I'm glad you're gonna attend to that, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, but questions about duration, uh, how long will we publicly be able to access these funds if they wanted to relocate? Yeah, go to hotels, what we put them up in during the, yeah, so. Yeah, I mean, yeah, how long would, how, how long could they go to, you know, what are you, what timeframe do you figure that they could possibly be relocated?
It's, it's for the duration of the twenty-four-hour drilling.
And?
So it's, it's usually, well, it could be as fast as three weeks. It depends on the different depths that the, the wa- the drill well has to go. So in some cases where we're drilling down thousands of feet, it takes longer. This well, we foresee is gonna be a little bit more shallow, so somewhere between three and four weeks.
Three and four weeks.
Hopefully. We'll get more in, into that as we go into the design, um, and laying out the schedule, but that's about the duration.
Great, thank you.
Uh, I just have a, a couple of quick questions. So the, the twenty-four-hour drilling for three to four weeks, if that weren't twenty-four hours, it was twelve hours, for example, it wasn't during the night, my, uh, guess is that it would take six to eight weeks, correct? It would be a longer noise impact.
Potentially, and it could even be longer, because when you stop drilling for a certain amount of time, you run the risk of the hole caving in, or the drill material being stuck down there. So, um, it's not necessarily directly linear or double to the, to the time.
And then is there any flexibility, as, as mentioned, there's, uh, you know, families with children and whatnot nearby? Um, and I imagine that for, uh, for example, a family of four with young children, a hotel room wouldn't necessarily be the most appropriate. So is there flexibility in that for, uh, for example, an Airbnb or a short-term, um, rental, where they would feel more in, uh, like they're in a home rather than, than in a hotel room? Is, is that an opportunity as well, or is it strictly hotels?
Yeah, that's a really good question, we can look into that. Typically, it's been just a local hotel in our area, um, but that is something we can look into.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, okay, that was all the questions from the council, so we'll bring it to public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this matter? Saying none, we will bring it back to the council for, uh, comments and deliberation. Councilmember Story.
Uh, thank you again, Mayor. Um, and one, I, I, this is a great project, um, and I'm really happy to see it coming to fruition. Just some of the thoughts that, um, I would like to see, and it sounds like I need to get it in now, or forever hold my peace, and so, um, uh, one on the well site, I think it would be a great opportunity since it's so near New Brighton School, um, and the, uh, school adjacent to it at the church, um, that we develop that as some sort of educational life lab, um, location, uh, put some, um, educational, uh, aspects to it. Um, and also being part of the Arts Commission, you know, there's never a wall that the Arts Commission doesn't like to see, uh, made more attractive. Um, so I think it's a great opportunity to collaborate between the city, the water district, and the school district to, uh, do something educational and more attractive there. And on that lines of attractive, I noticed, um, um, you know, the old telephone pole, it looks like in the rendering, that, that same telephone pole is gonna continue to exist. Since I imagine you're gonna be doing some trenching, I think if it's feasible, um, it would be not only, not only safer, but also more attractive for that area if that, uh, if the utilities could be underground. The gravel, I, I don't find it particularly attractive or pleasing, and, um, and so, but I get it. But if it's a maintenance issue, it seems like it's just, because something's gonna grow there eventually. Um, maybe better to just to plan ahead and anticipate it, and maybe put in something that's more green, uh, than just crushed rocks. Um, and my last point is concerning, in reading the report, uh, on the trenching of the roads, um, Kennedy down the park, um, uh, and up a bit. Um, and the way it reads in the report is that the roads will re- will be returned to their approximate condition prior to construction. Whenever I see something like approximate condition, okay, I, I know I'm gonna see this stripe down the road, or a dip where the trenching was done. Um, and I, I would like to see at least say, i- in as good a condition as prior to the construction, and ideally, uh, maybe better. When we did the project in the jewel box with the sanitation district, we, they worked with us, they, and we re-slurried, so it, it really became, um, almost like a new road, and you never saw, you don't, you do not see, uh, the results of that trenching that was done. So, um, I would like to maybe see something, and if, working with this, with us to maybe, um, contribute to that, I don't know when this is gonna be done or what those road conditions would be, but I think that if we could work together to make the road better than what it was prior to the trenching, uh, and not just approximately in the same condition. So, um, those are my thoughts on the project. Um, but with that, full speed ahead, thank you, thank you, Ron.
Thank you. Councilmember Bertrand.
So I would like to reiterate my concerns that I communicated in our conversation. I'm very concerned about the, um, families nearby, especially the ones with children, and I'm very heartened here that you're gonna be providing something that could make up for that disruption in their life. Um, my other suggestion was to reach out to New Brighton School, and Sam and I, I think, would like that to be a learning case, learning opportunity, I think that's a good one. I'd like to add two things, uh, based on Sam's question, I didn't know this would be our last chance to really make a major comment. Two things occur to me, I'm familiar with that little driveway that goes to the site. I haven't closely looked at it, but it's not in the best of condition, and it does provide access to the apartment house down at the end of the driveway. And so maybe, uh, in terms of improvements to the area because of, of the impact and stuff, that might be a good thing to do, is make sure that road is made better. Um, the, my fourth, my fourth comment is, in terms of public education, maybe having some sort of explanatory sign on the fence itself detailing what this project, what the purpose of this facility is. Maybe, you know, people wa- as they walk by there and such like that, and they might respect it a little bit more if they realize this is something for public benefit.
Thank you. Councilmember Rataf.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think most of the comments that I've concerned about have been brought up. I, I, I do, I did saw the look, funny look on your face when Councilmember Story suggested some planting back there, we had gravel. I understand it's a construction site, and also, uh, you're an advocate of, uh, conserving water, so I, you know, I, I don't have a problem with the gravel being back there, it's not a park, it's, uh, it's basically a remote area for just your pipes, so I, I, I don't have deep concerns over that. I am concerned about Monterey Avenue, though, we just recently paved that, and I, I think the language that you probably use is just some standard language that probably is in lots of contracts to return to as, as is condition, but, uh, just make a note here that that's, road's in pretty good shape, and we're, we're looking forward to it being that way for a long time, so that's it. Do we need a, uh, recommend, do we need a motion to approve a coastal, then I'm gonna go ahead and make-
Authorize?
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, this, I'll read it right here, make a motion, authorize a consolidated coastal development permit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Did we, we brought this to public comment already?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay, sorry, got, got a little lost in the agenda there. Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have it on record that, uh, Councilmember Brooke has abstained, or recused, yes, so any abstentions? None, and with that, uh, motion carries. That brings us to the end of our agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much, take care of yourselves and take care of each other. Meetings adjourned.